Meeting to order of the Committee of a Whole for the City of Bloomington. And at this time, if we'd stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of reflection. Madam Clerk, if you'd take a roll call, please.
Councilmember Kearns?
Here.
Councilmember Mosley is absent. Councilmember Motney?
Here.
Councilmember Danenberger is absent. Councilmember Straza?
Here.
Councilmember Hendricks?
Here.
Councilmember Ward?
Here.
Councilmember Lee is absent. Councilmember Scott?
Here.
Mayor Brady.
Thank you very much. Regarding public comment, Madam Clerk, are there any individuals with for public comment tonight seeking public comment?
Yes, we had two emailed public comment and then we have one registered for in-person public comment. Our emailed public comments were from Cynthia Kumar and Brittany Burton, and those were emailed to council before the meeting.
Okay, and is there someone giving public comment?
Yes, William Gustafson.
Okay. If you want to come forward for the record in regards to public comment, we ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. And there will be no reciprocating interaction from the council who will listen and be respectful on our side and your side.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Some people like to start with a joke, but I like this quote, kindness and truth shall meet, justice and peace shall kiss. So then I had to go down and lock up my bike, but I'm curious if, I want to say I'll give a hundred dollars to whoever can name the two trees, the name of the two trees out in front of your government center here, they're about this big ground. Anybody have any idea? Anyway, they're native Kentucky coffee trees. I planted trees at Custer Brothers Nursery in Sobow in 1967 to 77. Anyway, planted many trees in the community. But what I wanted to share with the community here, Minnesota has a program called Lawns to Legumes. They're promoting people to plant pollinators in their parkways and front yards. I think, I think you can receive up to $400 reimbursement. I think they have like a $900,000 fee that, you know, that was allocated for this. But the City of Bloomington, they could have a similar program and use all the money that's collected to collect the leaves. If we regurgitate our citizens, we could save that money and put it into lawns to legumes or use it for other tree projects. And everybody's yard, to me, should have a tree in a parkway. So also I wanted to say the city has a wildflower area. I think it's at the corner of Allen, Allen and Grove Street or over, over there, Allen and Front Street. Anyway, I would like to do that in my backyard, but according to the ordinance of right now, the plants supposedly cannot be over eight inches. They've got to be in borders and so on. And to me, this is my pursuit of happiness and, you know, allow the plants to grow some over, you know, 18 inches. I've got right now, I've got some wild elder rare coming up and some native plants. So, so I'm encouraging the city to reconsider the ordinance that governs somebody's backyard to have native plants. Let's see, what else I wanted to say, right now, my, sadly, it's scheduled for demolition. Now, with the city to, you know, it's a legal matter, but the city to reconsider when they send the city inspectors out, to send somebody also with the department or habitat for humanity and possibly youth field. So they could get an idea and maybe a behavioral psychologist. I'm a collector, I'm a hoarder, they would say, but I like to invent things, make things and repurpose things. And so again, if that could be reconsidered, everybody's invited to drive by 1323 West Marlborough Street. The people before us had 15 children there. Now, my mom and dad had 10 children there. So we've been taxed for as many years. The house does need repair. I have a brother died from cancer, so there's going to be funds coming in from that to rehab the house. But right now, I'm kind of plenteed to, you know, to be able to sleep in peace. And lastly, I know the city is excited about the homeless people to do something with those shelters. But what they might want to consider also is the abandoned midnight hospital, there's rooms there, the abandoned hospital rooms. And then also lastly, at the city, I think some cities are doing a, like the storage places, they allow people to bring pets. They could be little efficiencies, so whatever the city, whatever home, what's to build for people to stay in temporary shelters. You know, it's already in place with places like Wilson's or places that have outside storage, storage. But anyway, those could be little efficiencies.
William, can you read your comments so close so we can forward, please? Thank you.
Sure, sure. And so last thing, those could be little, little efficiencies and a gated community for people who would want to pay equity or whatever. Anyway, thanks for your comments.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Are there other speakers?
No, sir.
Thank you. At this point, we'd like to move then to the consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda, is there any reason anyone has anything to be asked to be removed or questioned about? Okay, Madam Clerk, go ahead then and first a motion of someone to move the consent.
I'll move approval.
And is there second?
Second.
Okay. If you go ahead and take the roll then?
You'll use your clickers? No clickers, all right, we'll do roll call. Councilmember Kearns?
Yes.
Councilmember Motney?
Yes.
Councilmember Straza?
Yes.
Councilmember Hendricks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much, then moving on to the regular agenda. And at this time, I'd like to invite our city count or our city manager, Jeff Jurgens.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm going to ask Cordero Patrick to go ahead and come forward. He's going to be presenting tonight for the first time publicly, our Neighborhood Housing Rehabilitation Program, our proposed program. Tonight is the first time that we will be outlining this. We've talked about some elements of this in the past, but have, with Cordero being new to the city, wanted to give him some time to really put a formal program together and to put his spin and style on it as well. So we've shared it with some limited stakeholders, but tonight, this is really the first time it'll be outlined with the council. The council can give us direction, tell us what they like, what they don't like, what they'd like to see more of or less of, maybe talk about next steps. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Cordero.
Thanks, Jeff. Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, council members. Before I get started with the presentation, I would like to just take a few seconds here to just introduce the Community Impact and Enhancement Team, the managers of the department. We have Anastasia Shaw back with us tonight, who is our administrative programs supervisor. Anastasia is responsible for managing our support staff, which is the backbone of our operations. We have Linda Weber, who is our Community Enhancement Supervisor. She's responsible for managing our code enforcement team. We have Taylor Kern and Hannah Horn, our downtown development specialist, who manages all things downtown, including special events. And then we have William Bessler, who's our grants manager, who manages our local state, federal and philanthropic use of dollars as relates to community revitalization. So I just want to put a name to faces for the leadership team for the department. Next slide. It is important to note here that the CIE Department is working through a comprehensive community revitalization framework, which is a holistic and targeted approach to improving the equality, I'm sorry, of life in almost challenging neighborhoods. And with this mission and goals that you see before you, those things will help ground us as a department in this work. But for tonight's purpose, I will be talking through a specific program that will be housed under the Community Revalidation Framework, which is a Neighborhood Housing Rehabilitation Program. Next slide. The agenda, so we will talk through the purpose of the Housing Rehabilitation Program. We'll talk about what are the objectives, the program goal, how are we going to assess where we are right now as relates to housing rehabilitation, dealing with vacant and derelict properties, and what are we going to actually do, right? To help resolve the challenges that we have around that. And we can't do this work alone. So we'll talk a little bit about partnerships as well as a timeline and benchmarks. I will touch briefly on some of the other program components that we are already doing as relates to neighborhood housing rehabilitation. And then how are we going to hold ourselves accountable and what's the funding strategy? Next slide. So what's the purpose? Why are we doing this? The Neighborhood Housing Rehabilitation Program is a targeted, would be a targeted community-wide, city-wide initiative designed to address property deterioration, increase neighborhood safety, expand housing opportunities and promote community pride. This will be a multi-departmental approach. We will be working with several departments across the city in order to make this a reality. And with the, again, with the purpose of making direct investment in our neighborhoods, especially those neighborhoods that are challenged when it comes to vacant and derelict properties. Next slide. What are the objectives? At the end of the day, you know, what are we wanting to achieve through this program? First, we need to identify how large is the problem, right? What is the problem? How large is it? How many vacant and derelict properties do we really have? It will always be a moving target, but part of what we're going to do with our assessment is to really kind of nail down what's out there right now. It's estimated that there's between 300 and 400 vacant and derelict properties out there. And so the first thing we need to do is confirm that, right? Confirm how many are out there, where they are, what type of conditions are they in? Who are the owners? Do they have city, city liens on them? Who, you know, can the, can the properties be rehabbed? Do they need to be demolished? Then we need to explore legal ways of reclaiming those properties. And I'm not suggesting tonight that the city becomes landowners or property owners. But there will be situations where it would be more efficient and effective for, for the city to own some of those property, either get them down or get them transferred into the right hands of nonprofits or housing partners that, that may be able to rehabilitate some of these homes. We want to improve the quality of housing and overall quality of life in neighborhoods and increase the supply of our affordable housing here in the city of Bloomington. Next slide. The goal, the goal is again to confirm, assess and return housing units that can be reasonably rehabbed back to the housing market. That's the goal, okay? Next slide. Identification and assessment. How are we going to accomplish this goal? First, we will again identify and assess what are vacant and derelict properties are and assess whether they can be rehabbed. Who owns the property? Are there any liens on the property? Are there redevelopment opportunities with these properties? That is step one, and I'll talk a little bit in a second here about a timeline as relates to us being able to do this. But that is the very first step, right? We need to identify and assess and determine how many vacant and derelict properties are actually out there. Next slide. What are we going to do? Here's the action plan, right? The first thing, you know, I want to just point out that there are different strategies that we're going to find ourselves in depending on the property itself. And so we kind of have to have a tailored strategy for each property, if that makes sense. Can a property be rehabbed? Yes or no, right? Do we need acquired property for redevelopment? Do we need demolished property because it can't be rehabbed? Does the property need to be enrolled in our neighborhood preservation program? Can the property be donated, right, to a qualified nonprofit? And then working with the owners of the properties themselves as well, because keep in mind, we now own these properties, right? And so we will work with the owner as much as possible to try to get them to voluntarily, through our code enforcement, some other measures to rehab the properties or to sell the properties or to get the properties in the hands of someone that can get them rehabbed. And then if we can't do that, then we need to explore with our legal team other pathways for reclaiming those properties, right? They just can't sit derelict and vacant and create challenges in our neighborhoods. They have to be addressed. Next slide. We, meaning the city, we do not have the capacity to do this work alone. We just don't. We don't have the people capacity, we don't have the resources to do it alone. We would need strategic partners to implement this program effectively, efficiently and at scale. And so we have listed, it's not an all-inclusive list, but we have listed some of the potential types of partnerships. But I would like to say that we have had direct But I will like to say that we have had direct conversations with Habitat for Humanity, who is standing ready to have some deeper conversations about being partners with us as relates to rehab. Many of us know Habitat as an organization that build new houses. Habitat is rethinking their concept, particularly Habitat here in Bloomington. They're interested in actually rehabbing homes. Their dollars will go further by rehabbing homes versus building new homes. And so this is very attractive to them, and they want to be good partners with us in doing that. Next slide. What's the timeline? Staff is proposing a five to six-year timeline to addressing the current vacant properties and derelict properties that are to be determined. Again, we think there are about between 300 and 400 out there that we have to confirm and come back to you with. And then, you know, you know, with, with their appropriate funding and resources, we believe that this could be done over a five to six-year period. So year one, right, year one is this fiscal year is what we're talking about. And the first thing is to again, really can identify what's out there and put those properties into, into those buckets, into those categories. Can they be rehabbed? Does it need to be demolished? Can we get those into the hands of housing partners? And then starting initiating the rehab and demolition on the highest priority sites, right? That those, those sites that's going to give us the best return on investment right away. Year two through five will continue that work of rehab and demo and try to return approximately 25% of properties per year back onto the tax roll. In situations where properties may need to be demolished, figuring out what kind of program can we create such as a side yard, side lot program, where we can, or motor own program, where the next door neighbor can, can motor a lot, maintain a lot for a period of time. And then we, we give that lot over to, to that neighbor to get it back on the tax roll. Those are just some of the ideas that, that we're floating around as relates to vacant lots themselves. And then year six, we will, we will assess, right? What did we actually get done? What's still out there? What else we need to do? Do we need more resources to finish the job? Next slide. Slides 11 through 16, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on those. We're going to show them, but these are some of the other program components that we, that we will be, we will be implementing in a more strategic, intentional, and targeted, measurable way. Many of the programs we already have been doing, but I do just want to point out a few new programs we would do this year. Next slide. One of them is the ReBloom the Block Program from vacant to, from vacant to vibrant. That program is, is really is what we're talking about tonight, right? How do we take those vacant properties or derelict properties and get them back in great condition and remove blight and stop blight in neighborhoods? Moving to a proactive code enforcement system. Right now, we are mostly complaint driven, right? And so we're going to be moving to a code, a proactive code enforcement structure. And we will make sure that we roll out some things to, to the public to make sure that they are aware that that's what we're doing. I think oftentimes we stand on this side of the street and we, we think that our residents understand, know what our rules are. And a lot of times they don't. So we will make sure that they understand what are those code enforcement, specifically as it relates to housing, what are those code-related items that they need to be aware of? Such as trash and debris, parking in the front yard, leaving your trash can out, those type of things. And also support low-income housing tax credits applications. And so we, we do intend to have low-income tax credits application submitted for the city of Bloomington by developers for Bloomington to do additional housing here in Bloomington. And so how can we support those applications with Illinois Housing Development Authority with the state? Next slide. Some of you all may know that West Bloomington did a quality of life plans over a decade or so ago. I had an opportunity to look at that, had an opportunity to talk with the consultant and actually put that together. I think there's an opportunity for us to dust that off and, and get it updated to really understand, you know, are these things still true and happening in West Bloomington? Do we need to do some things differently? And how do we engage community as part of the revitalization in neighborhoods? Next slide. The micro, micro grants to assist neighborhood groups and association would be something new as well. How do we help build compatible neighborhood groups and associations, right, with the city count and providing technical assistance to those organizations to be successful? Next slide. Cones with Community Enhancement or Code Enforcement, very similar to Call for Cops, right? So again, how do we get our code enforcement team out there in neighborhood, talking with community folks to make sure they understand what, what our ordinances are relative, relative, relative to neighborhood revitalization and housing rehabilitation? So really kind of carrying the, not just a stick, but carrying a carrot as well, right? How do we make sure that residents can have access to resources needed to be able to get those code-related issues resolved? We do intend, next, we do intend to also apply for, next slide, to apply for a Brownfield Assessment Grant through U.S. EPA this year as well. That will be a grant up to $500,000 to assess where they may be hazard contaminants in neighborhoods on lots that have been vacant for a number, for a number of years. I like to, you know, call them just, they, I categorize them as dirty sites. Sites they have, may have environmental concerns on them that we can use for redevelopment purposes. Next slide. In FY 26, this current fiscal year approved budget, the department has approximately $1.4 million in federal grants to use right now towards housing rehabilitation through CDPG funds, as well as our lead-based paint hazard reduction grant that we have. The, we have about $360,000 in state grants to strong communities around two with IDA, as well as through our HRAP grant. And then about $20,000 that we will use in general fund. I will note here that staff will be requesting about $105,000 in this fiscal year to complete two programs that I just mentioned, one being the West Bloomington Quality of Life Plan, as well as neighborhood cleanups. Next slide. This program will be led by the Community Impact and Enhancement Team. I have been, been fortunate enough to, to implement a lot of these strategies in the past with success that I mentioned tonight. I think we have a strong team, the team that I introduced to you in the beginning to, to get these things done. And we are, we are excited about that. We certainly will be partnering with all the departments, partners internally and externally that's needed to make this program a success. Next slide. So again, we'll seek grants, philanthropy, and voluntary opportunities for this program. But again, it will take a financial commitment over and beyond those means to do this at scale over the next five to six years. It is our intent to bring back recommendations for funding levels and allocations to be reviewed and considered by council. Next slide. Continuous improvement is important to us. We will make sure as staff that we continue to improve this program through real data and actionable metrics that will add value to the community. We are committed to keeping, you know, stakeholders engaged in this process. You would know throughout this entire process if we're moving the needle or not, right? Are we improving neighborhoods or not, right? And there are certain, certain data metrics that we will look at, look at to determine that. Next slide. Again, at the end of the day, this is a multifaceted approach that would include, next slide, that would include other departments, as well as making sure that we include our external partners as part of this initiative. This time I yield back to the mayor. Next slide. Taking any questions you may have?
Thank you very much for the presentation. Members of the council with questions? Member Kearns?
Yes, yes. Thank you for the presentation. This is exciting to bring forward and to, to get to talk about it. I had a few questions and some comments. I, if you could maybe talk a little bit more about like who will be on that cross-departmental team?
Yeah.
Team and kind of what you're hoping to accomplish or the approaches that you're going to take? Because I guess one of my main questions or thoughts that came up is, you know, we started to have a conversation about that missing middle presentation and kind of how we can see what's going on on the ground and how we might want to change our housing or zoning rules to encourage, you know, like with the ReBloom project, where it's like, could, are these vacant lots something that, you know, like zoning could, changes in zoning could help? You know, those types of things. So yeah, it's, you know, so that's kind of like the context to my question. But yeah, more about that team.
Absolutely. And so a, as we continue to, to go through our internal processes and procedures improvements across departments, we have identified internal departments and divisions that will need to be involved as part of this. And we've had some soft conversations with those departments already. Obviously, we would need support from our legal department, our development services department, planning and zoning division, public works department, our police department, all departments and divisions that we have identified right now to be a part of this.
Okay, great. Yeah, because I, you know, I think that's important because
Absolutely.
Like you said, you can't do it alone. So like, you know, a pipeline for outside partners as well as using, leveraging our resources that are internal to us. Which I, I guess I'll just say it again, is that I see a lot of overlap with this presentation and the efforts that we're trying to do here at the city. And so I just really hope that we can set a definite date. It sounds like July is going to be when the missing middle presentation could possibly come back. I think it's important that we commit to a date on that so that we can have that conversation and, you know, kind of help guide the city on how we think we, we'd like some of these things to, you know, the way that we'd like these things to go. So there's that. And then I know there's, I had a few other comments just about because, you know, I think it was really helpful that Mr. Guffsterson came today. I, I think hopefully your team was listening to some of his comments in terms of, you know, when someone, when there is a distressed property or there is something where a homeowner needs some assistance or guidance or whatever that, you know, that there's the wraparound services, again, kind of like that cross-departmental concept of, you know, there's a code violation, but, you know, is there assistance that they can get here or there or from the community or inside or outside? So I think that's helpful. And then I also was really interested in his comment about, because I'm, I want to turn my yard into natives. I don't mow, but it would be nice to not have to. It's constant, right? Mowing is constant. But anyhow, that that's, you know, things like that are interesting, like getting community feedback on, you know, like, that's a barrier to, you know, like it's an unintended consequence, like having a native yard isn't bad, but being a foul of the code is. So how can we make those things work together? I just thought that was kind of an interesting point. I think that's it. I asked you some questions in email and but so I don't know if there's anything else you wanted to?
I would just say two real comments here. This program is certainly connected with the missing middle housing report, right? In fact, the missing middle housing report calls out some of these things already, right, that I mentioned tonight. It even gets into detail of specific areas where we should be rethinking zoning as it relates to being able to attract new housing in, or in different types of housing in our community. So they are related, right? And for that reason, in, in others, we will be working with development services as well as development services, planning and zoning team. I'd like you to come in about providing wraparound services to community members. And one of the things that we're going to make sure as part of being proactive with code enforcement, is making sure that our team is equipped with the right resources, right? And so again, as I mentioned, we're not looking to just be someone to have a stick, right? Every inspector will have resources that they are aware of all the time, that they can, they can provide those things to, to residents, at least make them aware of it. Obviously, we won't get into recommending anything to residents, but we certainly will make sure that they are aware of the type of resources that's out there to assist them with some of the challenges that they may, they may be having.
Great. Thank you.
From the corners. Member Scott?
Thank you very much. So some of my comments were echoed here. So some things I'm excited about is, I'm assuming some of this will streamline the process then for when other vacant properties come to be. So determining the type of that, all that kind of stuff, and figuring out quickly what the best approach is to going to do that. Number one. Number two, I would imagine there's no department in, in, in the city that's, that said, oh, gosh, we've done too much outreach. So I appreciate that certainly. And then secondly, attached to this, you know, 75, 25% of 300 is 75, which is not a lot if we're talking about thousands necessarily of housing, but I imagine that there's all sorts of ripple effects in that. And then my question was, and I think, I think it's kind of been answered, is do you see this as not just reporting on metrics, but recommendations to what kind of changes we can make to, to zoning or ordinances or that kind of stuff that can make things better in the future?
Absolutely. And, and with this, we'll come some of that back to council, right? And so, you know, as I mentioned, as part of some of the other components, I can tell you right now that we will be bringing back recommendations to council about our neighborhood preservation ordinance, about our rental registration ordinance. There, there are things there that needs to be improved, right? And that will help contribute to the success of the program and sustaining this program long-term so that we, we're not finding ourselves always in a hole by 300, 400, 500 properties. So you're absolutely correct. And those things will be coming back to council in a short order. Did I answer your question?
Member Montney?
I thank you so much for this. It's very helpful to listen to you. Nice to have you here with the city. You mentioned the West Bloomington Quality of Life Plan. As you were becoming familiar with that plan, what struck you about it? What piqued your interest there?
I, I, I thought it was a very well-put-together plan, right? I thought that it, it included a, a large number of residents as the, the spokespersons for what they wanted to see in West Bloomington. I, I would tell you the biggest concern that I have with it is that there's no champion, right? And oftentimes when we put those type of road maps together and we don't either create a champion or build capacity within a current champion, those things usually don't happen. And so the commitment from me and my team is if we receive the funds to do an update, then we need to build capacity at the grassroots level of some entity to take that plan forward with us, you know, being alongside of them to get those things implemented, whether that be looking for grant opportunities or philanthropic opportunities to, to make sure that we have the resources available to, to actually implement those items. And so I thought it was a real good plan. I, I just think that it may have failed by the wayside because of the lack of having a champion to take it across the finish line.
Any, say, one or two things that really stood out to you as something that should require some immediate attention, in your opinion?
There's, there's several things. I, I think the, the one thing that is to glue, to hold that, that whole project together is the roadway itself. And I think that using that as the nexus for getting community back together to understand, you know, what needs to be done there is going to be critical. I think some of the place-making stuff, you know, identifying opportunities to put green space back into good use is critical, right? Because that again is going to put those properties back on tax rolls and continue to increase property values and quality of life in those neighborhoods. And I think some of those things also is directly tied Uh, and and I think some of those things also uh is directly tied to something that goes in the plan, which is uh, for example, uh decreasing serious and violent crime uh in those neighborhoods. And so, you know, those are some of the immediate things that stood out to me. But again, uh without the right resources uh in a champion to to get it across the finish line, i- it just become a plant on the shelf.
So is that something that you'd be able to send us after this meeting, the report that was previously done?
Absolutely.
So a couple other questions. Um, y- you've laid out a six-year plan. But if you just looked at the next twelve months and everything went well from your perspective, at the end of twelve months, what would you love to see happen? How would you create value within that shorter timeframe, just to kind of give the quick plan, if you will?
So in twelve months, you would know where are the vacant properties, where are the derelict properties? And what are we recommending to happen with each one of those properties, right? And you're also gonna get a funding plan, right? Or at least a funding request, I should say, right? Uh, you know, uh, we're gonna say we have X properties, uh, for ease in math, let's say there are three hundred. We have three hundred properties out there. Up to three hundred, a hundred and fifty of those can be rehab, a hundred and fifty needs to come down. It costs about twenty thousand dollars per property for single prop- single family housing to tear down. And here's the number to tear it down. We can tear them down in one year, we can tear them down in five years. It just really kind of depends on, you know, what what this council uh wants to do, right? And so we would do whatever we have the funding and resources to do uh as it relates to taking care of the problem. But in twelve months, you will know how many are out there, what they are, what kind of condition they're in, uh, what kind of strategies it can be in place uh to get them back uh on the tax roll and what the funding request is going to be uh to be able to do that.
Cordaro, can, I'm sorry for to interrupt. Can you also speak to some of the hammers hitting nails projects that we're gonna be able to move forward with as we go forward this fiscal year? The conversations with Habitat for Humanity and others, where we're actually gonna be doing some rehab work and actually getting some of these houses back on the tax rolls.
Yeah, a- and so, I mean, s- some of this is not just vacant and derelict properties, some of it is owner occupied, right? So right now, we we have an owner occupied rehabilitation program using our CDBG dollars. So we'll continue to do those efforts. I mean, Habitat for Humanity, uh, they they would like to do one or two pilot projects this year uh as it relates to rehab. And so we're trying to figure out what does that actually look like uh with them for this year to see if it works, to see if it's 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 something that can really happen. But the other part of this, uh, and I didn't get into great details, um, but and we can certainly do that at some point, is um, do we have the pipeline of potential homeowners as well? For the homes that we're gonna be rehabbing. So we're gonna need to partner with folks that can do uh home buyers or counseling and offer home first-time home buyers assistance, whether that be down payment assistance or or closing costs to make these things a reality. Uh, and so there's certainly some things this year that we will do particularly to use as pilots. Uh, but to be serious and to do this at scale is 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 gonna take more than one or two per year.
So does that three hundred number include those that are owner occupied or is that
No.
vacancy inventory? Okay. And then my last comment is more really just a suggestion. I know you guys are studying the concept of flow. I think that's maybe some of what you were getting at as well. Um, so rather than having that first year be about that inventory, just gathering up a bucket of those and then trying to see how do you get them moving so that you can reduce the lead time to getting these from non-producing properties to revenue-producing habitable properties to add to that housing stock that we're all looking for in this community quicker? Um, and if there's any appetite for a conversation about that offline, that'd be great. It's just an iterative approach to this as opposed to that classic waterfall project approach where phase one is just gonna be the inventory. How do you get just enough to then start flowing them through the other parts of that work so that you can get them all the way through rehab?
I I would tell you, uh, I I'm happy to bring them back as quick as possible to you. Uh, you know, if 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 council wants me to bring thirty and and while we do doing the rest of the work so we can and give me funding to do thirty, that's what I do. So I'm happy to move as fast as council wants to move.
Yeah, there's a lot of great stuff out there that says that that's the fastest way to actually create a sustainable program because it can become self-funding and it can really help you get momentum that shows value beyond just white papers and things like that in the near term.
I don't disagree. And I would tell you Habitat for Humanity feels the same.
Thank you.
Member Hendricks. Yeah, I'll be brief because I know we're getting short on time here, but also express my appreciation uh for you being here and for your staff being here. You've got a great team that I I know they're ready to tackle some of this. Um, I would also just reiterate some of the things that my colleagues said and we've spoken about before, especially with code enforcement, the idea that it's helping, not hurting, right? Because so many of these properties are are could be individuals who are elderly, who struggle uh to to make the repairs themselves or low income and struggle to have the finances. I know I sent two just this morning uh two different cases and and your staff was really quick at getting back uh to me with some information on those. So appreciate that. Uh, my question is, um, do we have a plan for some commercial properties as far as, um, you know, rehabilitation for them or yeah, you know, one of the aspects that you brought up was accessibility as far as ramps and those sorts of things. In Ward Six, I've got a lot of high rises that elevators go out and seniors are trapped literally upstairs in their apartment for months, uh, not able to leave. Um, we've got the Washington Street Apartments that don't have accessible doors for wheelchairs in and out. Are, is there any talk of how we use, and I'm more in favor of the stick in this capacity, how do we use the stick to 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 make those more accessible for for our residents?
Yeah, I I think a couple of things. When we haven't talked in detail about commercial properties, but there's there's certain part of the consideration set. With commercial properties, I I think that's where um the neighborhood preservation ordinance um that I spoke of needs to be updated uh to have a little bit, little bit more teeth, uh, if I can be just honest with you. Uh, I I I think um, I I think we just need to have a a a lot more teeth with that ordinance in a, in order to deal with a lot of the commercial properties. I have uh, I have done a program in the past uh for commercial properties uh by way of a loan uh to commercial real estate uh agents uh and owners. Uh, oftentimes, what we've, what I've found is that um, and and I don't know that to be the case here in Bloomington, I haven't done done the the research, but sometimes uh owners of of commercial properties are not able to, especially those that are in 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 bad repair, um, to to take out a line of credit, right, uh, to do those repairs because the line of credit uh is more than the asset itself, right? And so being able to to create a situation where we could uh help facilitate uh small interest loans to to real estate and commercial uh owners uh maybe helpful, right? And and we can have some more conversation about that, but that is an approach that I've taken before that uh that was very fruitful.
Member Ward.
Thanks for this. It's really exciting to finally be getting to this conversation and um I'm I'm glad to hear the support that's already been expressed, particularly for the idea of moving this along faster. Um, and so I I'm glad we're on the record with that and I look forward to to all sorts of ideas around how that can happen. I am curious, though, what are some of your thoughts about how we can step up the pace? Um, earlier, I think you had mentioned um something about targeted tax foreclosure and lien enforcement. And at least I'm kind of wondering, has that not already been happening? What's been the barrier to that? I know in past years, we've maybe had, what, seven to ten properties that seem to be in the pipeline a year, which if we're talking about three hundred properties, that feels like a really long time.
Sure.
So how can we step up the pace?
I I would, I would say, uh, the the judicial process foreclosure takes some time, right? Uh, but uh it it is, I use this analogy, is it's kind of like that freight train, you know, it it takes a while for that train to 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 leave and 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 start moving, but once it's moving, it's moving, right? Um, I I don't know if we in the past, maybe Christian speech today, I'm not sure if we in the past have used um lien foreclosure or 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 tax liens uh in the past uh to do any of this sort of work. I do know that we do place liens, city liens uh on on property that are in violation uh with the city. Uh, and and again, there is an entire process with that as it relates to foreclosing on those liens if need be, right? So I'm not sure if I'm exactly a hundred percent answering your question, but uh, I will say that that is a tool that can be used in the toolbox uh to help, you know, get some of these properties back into good use.
Cordaro, would you mind briefly speak, also speaking to developing a relationship with the trustee process and those properties that are perhaps already in the tax sale process, perhaps acquiring them and moving forward with them?
Yeah, I mean, there's an opportunity for us to inject, you know, in in the trustee process. I mean, the the uh back taxes process early on in the process, right? Instead of year three and four, we probably should be injecting ourselves in year two, uh, right? And so uh, because some of those properties, the longer they sit vacant and derelict, uh, the worse they become, right? We 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 lose the opportunity to rehab those homes at a reasonable price, uh, the longer they stay vacant, right? And so, um, building that relationship with the trustee and being able to get some of those properties uh through through other legal mechanisms, uh, is something that we will again explore uh with with the trustee as well as uh with our legal team.
I know we're out of time, but I do have a couple more questions, so I guess I'd ask if we could have maybe three more minutes?
Sure. Thank you. Go ahead.
I'll second. Thank you. Councilmember Kearns? Yes. Councilmember Motney?
Yes.
Councilmember Strazza? Councilmember Hendricks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Councilmember Scott? Yes, thank you.
Great. Um, so thanks for that. Um, I wonder also what we can do to proactively market rehab programs. Um, I I don't know that you need to answer that right this second, but I um, I I just can't say enough how much I think we need to do. It's one thing for us as a city to say, yeah, we've got this program and here it is. And then nobody knows about it. People need to know about it.
And they will. Uh, in fact, we've we've already started having some conversation with external partners about this.
Um, and then, um, how do you define derelict?
Um, properties that is unhavable.
Okay, okay. Um, and then the last thing, um, what are your thoughts about how to do proactive code enforcement? Who's gonna partner with you about that? Because I'm presuming that the six people in this room in your department
Sure.
can't do that all by themselves.
Yeah.
So how does that work?
Yeah, so so right now we have nine wards, right? And uh, and we have eight
Inspectors?
Seven inspectors, uh, because we have one inspector that is just so great, he can do two wards by himself. Uh, and so, uh, so we have an inspector assigned to each ward right now, right? And so, uh, with some of the changes that I believe needs to happen with the rental registration program, for example, because my inspectors are also doing rental registration uh ins- inspections as well. Um, right now, I don't foresee uh a need to do anything in addition to that from a capacity perspective. I'm saying that right now. Um, but once we get into that, we will really be able to understand if we need more capacity. Uh, but I think we're just changing some of the processes and procedures of how we do things from a code enforcement perspective right now. We should be able to do those things. And the other thing is, again, we will have uh events, uh, we will be out in the community to make sure that they are aware uh of what we doing, what the do's and don'ts are, uh, what kind of resources are available to help them with those type of things well before we begin to really begin proactive code enforcement. The other thing is, we need to have conversation with our legal team because it impacts them. You know, do they have the capacity to adjudicate more, you know, uh, uh, more cases? Uh, does that mean moving to uh administrative court twice a month versus once? So those things have to be worked out. So there's a little bit of of detail to be worked out with that.
I would like to publicly share a an idea that Jamie Mathie, who used to be on city council, and I cooked up one, one day com- in a conversation, he pointed out that every single week, every household that is in our garbage system has eyes put on it. Right? The garbage truck drives by. They see the big piles of trash out there. They see the, some of these things. Why couldn't they be enlisted to jot down one, two, three, whatever street? And hand you that.
Yeah.
It's already, the people are already out there looking at it and driving on by.
Sure. We will have eyes on it now, too. I I promise you that.
Thank you. Member Strazza.
Make this quick because we're out of time again. Um, yeah, I think it was very important what you said earlier is learning through the process. There's so many things that you're trying to do right now, and I want to make sure that we really learn from what we're doing uh with code enforcement. As you said, more education with people. And as we're doing this, how do we educate people to, so they even know that they're aware this is going on? So if we're doing rehab, what, how do they find that out? Uh, so I hopefully, as time goes on, as you learn through this process and refining the process, because there seem, I think there's some things that can definitely be refined and improved for everybody, because your staff is going to be overwhelmed by so many things. So if the processes aren't refined, there's no way you're gonna be able to accomplish this, no matter if we start a little bit now and a little bit later. Um, is there anything, I guess my question would be, what is it you need now that you don't have that would make this go a little bit smoother other than maybe more people?
Um, that is to be determined, right? Uh, you know, I can sit here and say I need X number of dollars, X number of staff. Um, but but I'm not ready to do that. Uh, I I want to be sure uh of what the needs are. I would say, um, what we need from from council and and it may be coming at the next meeting is uh, just, hey, thumbs up, we think this is the right direction, let's at least begin the process. Uh, and then we'll, I'll be able to come back to to you and to other council members and to the mayor and say, here's where we are and here's the roadblocks we're running into as it relates to resources. Uh, for us to continue down this path, for us to, for the metric to be this over this amount of time, if that's what you're wanting, this is what we're gonna need to be able to do that. Uh, but I'm I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Yeah, no. Thank you.
Sure.
Appreciate your role.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for the report this evening. Um, next, I believe we have a report from the fire department and uh city manager Jurgens will explain further.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is uh report season to some extent. Uh, so we will have a report now from the fire department, followed by a report from our arts and entertainment department. I should have mentioned that all the reports are now included in the packet, along with the proposal that Cordaro Patrick just went over. Tomorrow, we will have on the website the PowerPoints of all of the presentations as well, so that'll be coming. But with this, this is an opportunity for our fire chief to go over the uh twenty twenty-four annual report and statistics from their department. With that, Chief Matheny?
Right. Excuse me. Good evening. I just want to say thank you to the council, city leadership and the community for their continued support of the fire department. And I'm honored to be here to kind of go over the highlights of their twenty twenty-four annual report. Um, we had another strong year with some historic run numbers and we had a focus on staffing and stations, a a theme that you heard uh kind of throughout the year with interactions, probably with some of our staff, uh, the la- the line level firefighters and uh through to the city administration. Uh, we continue to focus on improving ser- services, supporting our workforce and preparing for the future needs of our community. Uh, next slide, please. Um, from me, you know, I I'm incredibly proud of the the men and women who make up this department, and this is the first time I've ever been able to say that. You know, last year we brought on nineteen new people and we have two females, so uh that's another thing that we're celebrating. Uh, they show up every day to make life better for our community, our profession and our department. Like I said, twenty twenty-four marked the busiest year ever with fourteen thousand one hundred sixty-five incidents, incidents. That's a four percent increase over twenty twenty-three. EMS calls continue to be, make up the bulk of our responses at about seventy-six percent. Um, really excited to say that we're building momentum. We've hired nineteen new people last year. We've made significant investments in equipment upgrades, vehicles, uh, improvements to our stations and facilities, and we continue to make progress to staffing a fifth ambulance every day. Next slide, please. In twenty twenty-four, went through a, probably the first ever strategic planning process for the department. And and part of that, we we took a look and updated our mission, vision and core values. We did a three-day workshop that involved a cross-section of our department from probationary employees down to twenty-five or thirty-year employees. We also had internal and external stakeholders that came and participated in that. And uh, we went down with this process, a similar path is what we did at the city staff level, to define our purpose. Um, we tried to answer the question is, why do we exist as a fire department? I know that's a question that we've heard. Um, and I think our updated mission, our vision, our values reflect who we are, what we do. Um, and I think our updated mission, our vision, our values reflect who we are, what we do and why we do it. So we're here to make our community stronger, safer and more resilient through exceptional emergency response and superior service. Um, this wasn't a thing and a statement that I came up with by myself. Like I said, it was a group project. We sat around with sticky notes and kind of went through the whole, the whole gambit of, uh, coming up with this. And also the vision of the department is to be, to be the premier fire department, and we're committed to excellence, innovation and progress. And our core values are accountability to the community, to ourselves and to each other. Uh, excellence in service that we deliver. We need to be adaptable to the times and what's going on in our community, and we are family. Uh, next slide, please. Just a brief overview by the department. I guess I should have taken a second to introduce myself for any new people out there. I'm Corey Matheny, I'm the fire chief. I've got deputy chief Mike Cartwigg of operations and, uh, deputy chief Jason Greer of EMS. So, uh, we're a full-service, um, full-time professional department, and we call ourselves All Hazards. So anything that I would like to say that they call nine-one-one and maybe the police department doesn't go, the fire department usually does. Uh, we're there to try to make things better and solve the problem that that shows up when we get there. Our services include fire suppression, EMS, hatters materials, airport rescue, rescue firefighting and public education. Um, where we serve from, we have fire, five stations strategically located throughout the city. Next slide, please. Here's just a a bird's eye view of our organizational chart. Off the left side is all of our operations. We have the three shifts that are, um, headed up by a battalion chief and the supporting staff that goes underneath it. The middle tier is our EMS and operations in that side. And then we have some more support and training logistics on the, on the right. Uh, next slide, please. Operational trends and and what's happened since twenty twenty-three. Like I said, our call volume continues to trend upwards. We were at, uh, twelve thousand nine hundred sixty-nine calls back in twenty twenty-one, and we're at fourteen thousand one sixty-five this year. It's a little confusing that, don't look at that two-point-eight percent yet. So that's about a ten percent increase, uh, from, uh, twenty twenty-one. If we went further back, we'd up to be, uh, about twenty percent increase because, um, from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one, we saw a ten percent increase just due to COVID. Um, what we're looking at here is our percentage of growth. So the EMS calls have gone up about two-point-eight percent from, uh, twenty twenty-three. And the two numbers below that is something we don't quite talk about all the time, but our false alarms and false calls have increased by fifteen percent. So when we respond out to a, a system issue or malfunction or, um, other calls like that, we're sending resources that potentially don't need to go there because it's, it's not a true emergency. And our structure fires have actually increased about eight-point-six percent. So it's, it's important that we look at this and we're watching the trends that we can adequately staff and respond in the future. The graph on the right side just kind of shows those trends over five years. So that bottom green bar, that's the EMS responses and and how the other stuff, and you can see how it takes up the the bulk of our, our calls and then how everything else kind of filters in between there. Next slide, please. Response overview. The National Fire Protection Agency sets a response benchmark of a ninety percent, ninety percentile, it's hard to say sometimes, of, they want us to be on scene within five minutes and twenty seconds for emergency fire incidents and five minutes for EMS incidents. That five minutes and twenty seconds contains a, a minute and twenty minutes, sorry, yeah, minute and twenty seconds of turnout time. So the time it for us to receive the alarm, get out to the vehicles, put on our turnout gear and then a four-minute drive time. So our average response time last year was four minutes and fifty seconds. And that ninetieth percentile, we were at seven minutes and nine seconds. And just for, um, easy numbers, the ninetieth percentile, if people don't understand it, if we only went on a hundred, a hundred calls last year and we ranked them from the shortest response time to the longest, that call number ninety should be under five minutes and twenty seconds, and we are at seven minutes, nine seconds. Um, so we're beating that NFPA standard about sixty-two-point-one percent of the time. Our average response time did, uh, jump up just about two seconds over twenty twenty-three, but that, um, ninetieth percentile did create decrease, uh, slightly as well. So we continually to look at our response data, looking for ways that we can improve and make more informed decisions as we move forward, as you will kind of see on the next slide, please. Here's a busy map of our response distribution. You can see our five, uh, stations kind of located throughout the city. And each of those little dots represents an emergency lights and sirens call for service. The shaded areas around the stations are how far we can physically drive in four minutes. So as you can see, there's a number of dots that fall outside of what we can physically make it in a four-minute drive time. And we cannot advocate for people to drive faster. It's much more riskier. Um, so that's, that's not a solution for this. And this is why we take some of this data and we look at it and we can see where there's gaps in the coverage. And, um, there's ways that we can address that and and we're working towards that, um, as we move forward. One of the things that we've talked about is the need for new stations and trying to distribute some of that load. You can see how the headquarters station, you you can't hardly see it there. It's completely covered by the, the red dots. Uh, we've got uneven distribution of call load, and that's just where the, the people that need our services the most are at. So part of this is a, a station location issue, but it's also can be a station capacity issue. Because if headquarters is running calls and they're, um, if you look at the numbers, they make up, those units go on about sixty percent of every call that comes in. Um, they might be on another call and not available to take the next one in. Um, so we're looking at ways to improve that capacity and also how can we improve that drive time reach? And one of those areas that we're going forward with is a traffic preemption upgrade. We already have a little bit of that in place. However, um, we're working on two grants that will take, uh, traffic preemption to about eighty-nine different, um, intersections throughout the city. Um, and like I said, this will be funded by, uh, two separate grants through our engineering department. Uh, next slide, please. So this is a quick map of that traffic preemption. You can see the, the different dot, uh, icons indicate which, um, traffic signals would have preemption. And what that does is it gives the, the monitoring system the ability to, um, turn a traffic light green for the direction that we're going. It's got all the safeties in there. It can't just turn something red right away. It has to have enough time for it to cycle through, give people adequate time to stop. And it allows us the ability to proceed through the intersection with caution, you know, making sure that everybody stopped. Um, it's, the system is GPS-based and has some new technology in there. And, um, kind of going down Market Street, you can see that there's a, a blue dot and there's kind of some circles and then another blue dot. Well, this system gives us the ability to actually kind of daisy chain them together. So the data shows that majority of time, if we hit that street on Market, we're going to keep going further. So instead of having to put one on each intersection, it can automatically talk to the next one, to the next one and just turn them green for us. And because the system knows, you know, historically, that's where we're going. It also knows that if we turn a turn signal on, you know what? We're probably not going straight now. We're going to go a different direction. So it can start communicating that to the next intersection. So there's a lot of new technology out there that we're looking to embrace and, uh, see if we can really stretch that four-minute drive time to make it, uh, more efficient for us. Next slide, please. Just a quick snapshot of our emergency response activity. Um, you've got the, the calls per company, they're on the left side of the screen. And the way a lot of our apparatus are, are labeled, um, if it has a one by it, it's at station one or headquarters at two, it's at station two, um, and so on. So you can see the, the bulk of the, the incidents are handled by headquarters and progressively throughout the, the city. Um, and on the right side, you can just kind of see how our call volume has increased over the last several years. Uh, the bulk of our, our calls still, uh, this year, we're, uh, ten thousand seven hundred seventy-five calls for EMS incidents. We had two hundred and twenty-eight fires, which is another high for us, and we're averaging a little over thirty-eight calls per day. Which is about a five percent increase annually. Um, like I said, going back to two thousand eighteen, our call volume's gone up thirty-two percent, but I think it's artificially inflated a little bit with that COVID year of ten percent. Otherwise, if we kind of average it out, we're about four-point-eight, so. Uh, next slide. Um, EMS still continues to be the leading call for service. Um, we deliver it through a tiered system of providers. We have EMT basics, EMT intermediates and, um, advanced level providers. We used to say they were just paramedics and it still says on the slide, but we actually have a couple of pre-hospital nurses now that are able to function at the paramedic level. Um, there was a change to our hiring practice and ordinances a few years ago that actually expanded that candidate pool, and we've been able to reap some benefits from that. Um, and EMS continues to evolve. We're adapting to meet the growing and complex needs of the community. Um, and we'll go to the next slide. Here's our response trends and apologize for the font. You can't see it very well. Um, general illness, falls and breathing problems have been in the top five, um, calls for service for the last five years. And we continue to look at this and we're trying to see, um, what can we do to maybe impact that we're not going out there quite as often? We're working with our public education information officer, Frank Friend. Um, he's really kind of leading the new initiative. Instead of just public education, it's called community risk reduction. Um, so we're looking at partnership being with, um, one of the local colleges, the I S C nursing students, um, to see if there's some public outreach that we can do this year to, uh, really focus on those fall, uh, the calls for falls and fall prevention, and what can we take inside to somebody's house to maybe, um, have them not need our services quite so much? Um, is it, you know, it just wouldn't be a nursing thing, but is it, does it need to, do they need a handrail somewhere? Could we work with one of the local unions to have some things installed to make, uh, you know, life better for them, so not relying on us to come out and and provide some basic needs? Next slide. Just, uh, training at a glance, um, being an all hazards department requires us to have a commitment to continuous training, and it has to be across multiple different disciplines. Last year, they logged, uh, just like the previous year, over fifteen thousand training hours. Um, many of those are required classes to say compliant with the various regulatory agencies. Uh, firefighters are trained in firefighting, obviously, EMS, hazmat, autos, extrication, uh, just to name a few. Uh, our instruction process, we, uh, brought onboard two assistant training officers last year to help do more in-house teaching. Um, and so we're blending some of the in-house training with, uh, training at local, um, at University of Illinois through the Fire Service Institute and different national academies like the, uh, National Fire Academy. You know, education is the foundation of a safe and effective service. Next slide. Community risk reduction and and public education, just kind of, uh, what the outreach looked like for this year. You know, we had, you know, a number of people impacted with, um, just public outreach, social media, different events. We've installed over two hundred and fifty smoke alarms. We had over three hundred people do ride-alongs with us. And that's how, um, we kind of keep that applicant pool coming. If somebody has some interest, they can come and ride along with us uh, and kind of see what the fire service is about for us here in Bloomington, because we are a little bit different than what you see on Chicago Fire. Um, some of the big impacts and, um, it's a little different right now because usually this, uh, report's given a bit earlier in the year. Um, however, I thought it was important to get in front of the new council and kind of tell you all about who we are and what we do. Um, we do have some of these twenty twenty-five initiatives already in progress. So we've taken, um, possession of a new fire safety simulator and, um, a STEM education. It's a different type of fire simulator where they can see kind of how the flow paths of heat and smoke travel through a building. And also we did some smart burner and, um, installations in a couple of facilities around the town and the city, sorry, the city. Um, and all of that was partially funded by grants from state farm. They've become a, a great partner and Frank Friend has reached out to them and and established a great relationship. And they are committed to our community and providing, um, some funding to keep the, uh, public outreach and fire prevention, um, STEM education and other safety initiatives. And that fall prevention is also what any key event initiative that we talked about that he's working on for twenty twenty-five. Uh, next slide, please. Our fiscal year twenty-five highlights, like I said, I mean, it was a, it's a busy year. We hired nineteen people. That's the most we've ever done. And and onboarding all those people and keeping track of everything was, was quite a process. We took possession of a new engine. Um, we took, uh, implemented the ALS three sixty program that was approved by council a while back, that it replaced all of our stretchers. We have power stair chairs now, um, cardac monitors, um, Lucas CPR devices, and we have the best equipment for the best providers to do the best, uh, we can to provide services for our community. Um, we had a lot of vehicles that were backordered because of COVID and just the backlog. And so a lot of those came in this year. We didn't plan on replacing six sport vehicles, but, uh, when it suffers back from two thousand, uh, twenty and they started showing up, um, we have them now. So, um, the other significant stuff is we did a new kitchen in station three and made some improvements on the HVAC and, uh, actually the boiler systems at headquarters and our number two station. Uh, next slide. Fiscal year twenty-six, we still have a, a look at, uh, investing in stations and staffing as well. Um, we're committed to, uh, improving the HVA systems, the air handling units at station one, our headquarters, and us, and replacing the entire HVA system at station number three. Uh, last year, it started to, um, fall apart kind of in the middle of the, the summer. And so we were able to work with facilities and and get it, uh, functional and and it's made it this far, but it it's due. And, uh, so that'll happen here in the next few months or into the fall. Um, we're looking at adding a, a sprinkler system to part of headquarters because of the growth that we've had and adding that fifth ambulance and the staffing. We're running out of space in the bedroom, so, um, we have another space that we're converting into, uh, kind of a, another bedroom for the battalion chiefs. However, when you change the use of that area, you know, it has come up to the current fire codes, so we're working on a, a small residential sprinkler system in there. The other important thing we're working on is the standards of cover and a station needs assessment. This is going to help us look at the risk across our city, how we deliver our services, what improvements we might even need to make, and also coming in and looking at how big of a station do we need to provide those services and what piece of land do we need to put it on? So as we continue to look at where those gaps of coverage are throughout the city, we'll have a, a firm number of we need this amount of space to put the station on to continue to provide the services the community deserves. Uh, next slide, please. Um, just some closing remarks, you know, thank you to the council, the city staff and community for their continued support. Uh, everybody at the fire department is really proud of the work that our department has done, and we're not just standing still. We're going to continue moving. We're dedicated to commen- continuous improvement, continuing to fire, foster strong partnerships with a focus on service, and that will guide us forward. Once again, thank you for your support, our mission and helping the Bloomington Fire Department make life better. Now, if that'll take any questions.
Thank you very much. Member Strazza, do you have a question? I know, but he, you went last, last time. All right, okay. All right. Member Motney?
So the heat map slide of your responses, I think it was maybe slide eight on the screen?
Yes.
So a couple of questions in, in this one. Do you have this benchmarked by rate of population who lives in that area? I mean, because when we see this, we see this real in intense, you know, pattern, obviously. But is it reflective of the distribution of our population density? Have you ever looked at it from that lens?
I, I can't say that we have, but that would be something I'd be willing to, uh, look at and and provide you. Uh, I know we're, um, are able to work with the GS department and maybe pull in some of that different population layers and and look at it in more detail.
I think it could be interesting beyond just, you know, the curiosity of it, but to help us understand, you know, how could we be of support to you in educating and things like, um, the false alarms? That was a pretty significant number that you shared there, and anytime you're responding to false alarms, then you are not able to respond as quickly to those who really need your services.
Correct, and we've been working with development services and, um, we've got a great relationship with them. Their fire inspectors now are getting a report from us for frequent alarms, and they're going out now and following up and making sure they're up to code. Um, and trying to be a little bit more proactive instead of waiting until the end of the year and saying, wow, we went someplace, you know, three hundred times and was really not needed. So, uh, that is one thing that we are looking at as well.
And are those mostly commercial false alarms or are they distributed?
Mostly, yeah.
Mostly commercial.
You know, you'll have some at some of the high-rise buildings and, and a lot of those, you know, they're, they're cooking. I don't, I don't want to say they're cooking fires or, you know, somebody's cooking and it creates smoke and it sets off the, the detection system. So the system's doing what it's supposed to, um, but, you know, it's not truly, and we still have to respond. So we're trying to find ways also, our, um, community risk reduction actually handed out some information on cooking and hot pads and, you know, how to better take care of stuff like that. And that's where some of those smart burners come in too, that if they detect the temperature above a certain thing, it actually shut off the heat to it and can, you know, hopefully prevent it from going up to the cabinets or something like that.
This was a great report. Thank you so much.
Member Ward?
Yeah, thanks for this. I really, um, appreciate all that you all do, and I appreciate this, this report. Um, it was very informative. Back to that slide eight, just as an aside, I would, I would say that, um, if we look at it based on a ward map, right? The, the vast majority of those calls that are concentrated into wards. And so, six and seven, and so we can count on about what, eighteen, sixteen and eighteen thousand people live in those wards just by the way we divvy things up.
Okay.
Um, so there's a little bit of information. But, um, I'm curious to know, you mentioned that, um, that the, um, about what, seventy, seventy to seventy-five percent? About what seventy, seventy to seventy-five percent of calls were EMS versus fires? And I'm wondering if, if. That percent or that balance is true of. Fires versus in those two neighborhoods, those red dots on, on ward eight or ward. On slide eight with, that cover wards six and seven. Are those, is, is that balance, right, seventy percent? Thirty percent is that? Do you have those numbers? Do you know what I'm asking?
Yeah, so I can break that down for you. You can filter that heat map by, you know, what the incident type was. You know, we had those seven or so on the side and we can break it out and map it that way as well. You, you will have clusters though, because you have, you know, nursing homes and stuff everywhere. So you're, you're going to have a little bit of stuff.
No, I'm, I'm curious because obviously the housing stock is older in, in. The older neighborhoods and just the conversation we just had about derelict properties and so on. You know, it, it just leaves me wondering, is that, are those neighborhoods more likely to burn? Than, than other neighborhoods? The other piece has to do with, with. You know, people's health. There are health concerns that go along with being poor and not having good health insurance or good. Right? You don't get to pay for your medications and so on and so on. And so. I just wonder if, if that skews things to those neighborhoods as well and that we're likely to see more of that in the future, given the current climate.
Correct. I mean, we've, as, as EMS has kind of become the, the entry level into medical care for some people. Because they don't have access to healthcare and do preventative health, healthcare before something gets bad and then so we end up. Being their first medical contact and they end up at the ER and there's, there's times that ER is appropriate and sometimes it's not. So we're also looking at ways that we can. Maybe change that needle in the future as well.
I love the risk reduction idea and I would strongly encourage thinking. As much as I love nurses, right, I work in a hospital, nurses are great people, nothing against nurses. But I also wonder if connecting with public health programs. ISU has one, Illinois Wesleyan has an undergrad public health program, right? They're, they're out there. And that's like what they do, right? And, and I'm wondering if even in terms of staffing. What would it be like if the fire department had a community health worker on staff? Because some of these social determinants of health, right, are what get them calling you. And if, if we could have somebody who could connect people to those resources that are out there. Maybe you wouldn't get as many calls because somebody fell down because they couldn't get up their steps.
Sure, and just to give a quick compliment to our dispatch center, so they are triple accredited for police, fire and EMS. So they have the ability with that triple accreditation to potentially bring in. A different model, either in the dispatch center or partner with somebody else where they can treat, it's kind of like a nurse triage system, but. You know, that goes through the regular screening process and goes, you know what, this doesn't quite meet something for nine-one-one response. Let's kick it over here to have it screened by a nurse. And then maybe they have a different place for them to go, you know, is there, is it cheaper to give them an Uber to a prompt care or? Send a mental health provider out there. And some of that's coming with the S S Act and the different co-responder type models that are coming out there. So. There's a lot of possibility with what Darren has done at the dispatch center and how we can kind of grow that to our, meet the needs of our community.
Not to, you know, to run over time, but I don't even see a clock, so. But, you know, if we have somebody who's repeatedly falling down, is there something that we can connect them to? Right? Rather than always having to call you guys in.
And the system used to have, it was a grant funded position, a nurse coordinator. I think, was it a nurse or was it just a patient navigator? I guess patient navigator was a, the term for it and. So we were able to refer some of those cases to them and try to get them the assistance so they weren't relying on nine-one-one for everything. And so. That's another thing that we can explore moving forward. Bloomington is the highest nine-one-one, you know, responder in, in the county, so. Looking at how we can, you know, help support those, the needs of our community.
Like this quick, going back to that famous map, the slide eight. With that, looking at that is with the, the concentration in certain areas. Do you have the, maybe I missed it, the demographics of kind of the breakdown of age population in that area? Is it more elderly, the type of responses, the kind of calls you're getting for those, mostly EMS? So it seems like EMS is really the high concentrated area. That is really, you're getting most, majority of your calls. So I was just curious, do we have, was that on one of the slides?
It wasn't, but I, that data is easily available to you if you'd like.
I was just curious as we're diving into this understanding.
As we have the EMS side, when we're doing a report on them, we're catching all that demographic information so we can, you know. It spells it out by age, gender and everything.
Okay, yeah, I was just, yeah, I think it is helpful as we, as our population ages more and people are in different areas of the community. You know, nursing homes versus whatever long-term care type places, what does that look like and how do we help them? And then also too, how does that? Effect your department of like, how many more people do you need to hire for EMS or for transport? Because that's becoming a very high need and then where does that transport need to be residing to meet your four, four minute, four and a half, you know?
Right, and, and there's that trend of aging in place. And so if we can find ways to help reduce those, those falls and the fall prevention, that gives them the ability to stay in their homes longer. Because, you know, one fall and hip fracture is one of those sentinel events and that just, it throws them off their, their complete lifestyle and it's hard to recover from that.
Yeah, thank you. So again, slide eight.
Can we pause for just a second? I apologize, we're out of time. Do you want to do an extension for five minutes? I'll move five minutes.
A second.
Councilmember Kerns, yes. Councilmember Montney?
Yes.
Councilmember Straza?
Yes.
Councilmember Hendricks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Hi.
Councilmember Scott?
Yes, thank you.
Okie doke. So I'm just looking at a chunk of, say, ward nine, which seems to be out of that, that shaded area. So if you're curious about the. The, the program that will decrease the time and then. I'm assuming, you know, and, and how that works with, you know, potential needs for additional stations or staff or that kind of stuff. Can you speak a little bit more about the project and when, say, you would look at that or potentially implement?
So. Yes, we, we've talked as a department of a need for Northeast Station for a long time. And, but that's not the only gap that you can see on the map, right? So this is going to be a, a long-term investment in what. When I talked about the, the standards of cover, community risk assessment and the station needs assessment. Is going to help us come up with more of a master plan on stations and. I'd love to be able to build a station everywhere at the same time to cover those, those needs, but. I know that's not fiscally possible, so we're looking at how can we get the biggest impact on the first one? And then. Where that ends up impacts how the rest of them go and, you know, you're going to see, because there's never going to be the perfect property right in the center of where we need it to be, so. But that is our current plan and we should have some stuff by the end of the year on specifically. What size of parcel we'll need and I hope to work with community development and development services and stuff. And as we look at. New subdivisions and things like that, we might have to have an idea that says we need this amount of space for green space, but we also need this amount of space for future. Fire station or police, you know, a joint facility. Otherwise, we're trying to find something in the, the very limited space that's left for everybody.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just one follow-up question to that. So the boundary of, of ward nine, Port Jesse, you know, you've got. Yellow hydrants on one side and red hydrants on the other. I understand from the lack of sharing of a nine-one-one integrated system, it makes it perhaps difficult to collaborate with the town of Normal. But what opportunities are there? You don't have to answer it now, just for the future as we think about coverage. You know, that's obviously a territory where it's an outlier for both communities. Maybe there's an opportunity to collaborate.
Sure.
Thank you, thank you to you and your assistants and the entire department for your great public service and one quick question. Observation, in that picture, there is a Stryker van. I know Stryker is the company that provides the stretchers and equipment, et cetera. What's the significance of that?
So that was when we received all of those, that new powered stair chairs, the powered cots and a bunch of our equipment. We unboxed and put everything together on station five, so that was a, a picture of all that just kind of lined up with the Stryker up there. So it was a little PR for, for them and us.
They, they didn't give you a van and they didn't provide a vehicle. Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you very much. Great, great, appreciate it. Next, I believe, is a report regarding arts entertainment and manager Jurgens, if you'd give us some more information. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And again, council, I asked Arts and Entertainment Director Anthony Nelson to come forward. And he is going to give a presentation tonight overviewing the stats from the FY twenty-five fiscal year. And with that, Anthony, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, Administration for having us do the report. First, I wanted to say thanks to all the staff and volunteers at both facilities. As you'll see in the report. Events and activity has, has picked up again this year, meaning more nights at work, more nights away from their family. So I do want to thank them as they have kind of helped push our department to the next level. Just kind of some highlights as I'm going to hand it over to our marketing manager, Josh Moball. For about every dollar we received, we put about fifteen back into the economy through economic impact. And then as we continue to grow to the department, grow our relationships with promoters and find more efficiencies. We anticipate continuing to grow or close the gap at both the BCPA and the arena. I'm going to turn it over to Josh to present.
All right, as Anthony mentioned, thank you, Mayor and Council and City Manager for having us tonight. I'm Josh Moball, Marketing Manager for Arts and Entertainment, and we're excited to share with you the numbers from FY twenty-five for the arena and the BCPA. Next slide please. So Chief Matheny kind of stole our thunder here a little bit, but we did renew our mission, vision and values for FY twenty-five. So you can see, we also use staff input from the bottom up, whether it be volunteers, part-time. And leadership, we kind of all got together and brainstormed and we landed on the mission of creating lasting memories. That kind of falls in line with the city's greater mission of making life better. And our vision is to make Bloomington the premier entertainment destination of central Illinois. And that kind of also, Chief Matheny took that from us a little bit too. So, next slide please. Yeah, so our year in summary, so within the entertainment industry, you know, there's a lot of different studies that have been done. Trying to find that right ratio of economic impact to, you know, total revenue. So. We provided you a range using some of the more conservative estimates that we found out there. So twenty-three million. To thirty-seven million dollars of positive economic impact to the community from, you know, our department this year. We had a total attendance of just over two hundred and fifty thousand, which represents an increase of one hundred and seven percent year over year. We had two hundred and one event days, which was a sixty-eight percent increase year over year. So kind of what I want to highlight there is the kind of disproportionate relationship of, yes, we do have a larger event inventory. Over FY twenty-four, we're also bringing a higher concentration of high demand events to the community as well. Next slide please. So over at the arena. Of that about two hundred and fifty thousand attendees, we had a hundred and eighty-four thousand on the arena side and a gross revenue of. Just over six million dollars and then have some memorable, memorable events listed there. The big thing I want to highlight is just the diversity of events. So those highest ticket selling events for us right there are, you've got rock, you've got wrestling, you've got hockey, you've got hip hop, you know, those are, those are. Representative of a diverse audience in Bloomington and we're doing our best to hit every market possible here in town. Next slide please. So we wanted to also give a little bit of an update on the Bloomington Bison. Obviously, you know, as it pertains to our department. Such a valuable symbiotic relationship, public-private partnership with the Bison. We walk hand in hand with them through their inaugural season. So of that one hundred and eighty-four thousand about tickets to the arena, a hundred and two thousand of them. Were Bison tickets and we returned a net city revenue from Bison events of one point one million dollars. So about eight hundred thousand of that alone was food and beverage revenue, so. You know, just the fact that they're bringing people into the building and we're able to sell concessions to them, that's just a really huge part. Of what makes that relationship work. And then also there's some stats there on the Bison's commitment to the community. Community appearances, you know, Abe's been in the schools, been all over the place. It's been really cool to see. Money donated back to the community, eighty-six thousand dollars. I mean, I, hopefully we all remember the fifty thousand dollar shot that was hit by the. Youth hockey player early on in the season. That was a commitment to the community for sure, so. And then just highlighting some momentum into next, next season, twenty-five to twenty-six. They're already at over one thousand season tickets sold for next year. Next slide please. Okay, so over at the BCPA, we had a record attendance and record revenue year. So sixty-seven thousand patrons through the doors and a two-point, almost two-point-two million dollar gross revenue at the BCPA. We had fourteen shows that sold over a thousand tickets. Our capacity over there is eleven sixty-six, so. Eight of those shows went all the way to a totally sold out show. Pete Davidson was our highest grossing night in venue history with just over two hundred thousand dollars in a single night. He did two shows in one night. And it was really cool to see. Next slide please. A couple of fast facts for you. Twenty-five thousand six hundred unique ticket buyers according to our Ticketmaster data. You know, pretty compelling statistics there, seventy-six percent outside of Bloomington normal zip codes. And twenty-one percent outside of Illinois. And so it's really cool to see in actuality when you're at an event. Particularly our higher demand events like Josh Gates Live from last year, you can go through the line and ask people where they're from and they're. Maybe from South Dakota or Iowa or Wisconsin, you know, from way far out and that kind of plays into the. Eighty-one thousand three hundred and four miles approximately traveled to see our shows this year. And one of my favorite stats is the eight countries represented by Bison players. In case anybody is curious, those are. South Korea, Japan, Russia, Sweden, Latvia, Finland, USA and Canada. So that's super cool that there's people. Hear from all those places to play professional hockey. Next slide please. And lastly, just thank you again for, from council and mayor and city leadership for the continued support. We've got a lot of great events lined out for FY twenty-six, several shows that are already trending towards a sellout. And a lot more to come. So with that said, I'll take any easy questions and the hard ones go to Anthony.
Other members that have questions?
Just one.
Member Ward?
Do you know off the top of your head how many season tickets were sold for the Bison last year?
Yeah, I think seven twenty-six was their final number. So obviously a, a very significant jump. I think when the city manager and us met with the Bison. Ownership group earlier in the season, they thought there was a lot of positive momentum, but I think seeing this many season ticket holders. Come in and jump from that number last year is, is big. I was talking to their head ticket guy and he was like, you know. You know, I'm already ahead, two hundred and eighty seats every night when I'm trying to hit my goals. So it's, season tickets are, I think they're in the top. Top half of the league in season tickets for the second season. That's, that's significant.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much, gentlemen, for the report and I've enjoyed some of the shows at the. Center for Performing Arts outside, especially the concerts have been great. Good turnout. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move to. City managers' report unless there's comments from members of the council on any issues as we have another item coming up here, okay?
Thank you again. I'll be brief tonight if you could go to the next slide. Excited to announce that the Hamilton Road Bundit Commerce Phase Two, which you can see up there in the red. Is scheduled with IDOT to go out for letting August first. This will be a substantial. Progress for this project, which was in the works and a dream even before I started back with the city in twenty-fourteen. So this has been a long time coming, so to get to this point is, is very exciting and will be transformational for that area of our city. Next slide. And then finally, just want to make sure that the council and the community is aware, we have a new exhibit opening at the zoo. There will be a grand. We have a new exhibit opening at the zoo. There will be a grand unveiling of this on Friday, June 20th. But we will be welcoming a sloth. My understanding is we've had a sloth before, but we have another one now, so we are excited about this exhibit. The zoo just celebrated its birthday over the weekend. I know the mayor was there, and they had a good time, but a lot of exciting things going on at the zoo. And finally, just want to say, you know, my appreciation and didn't recognize him earlier, but Billy Tyus played a role in all of the reports tonight with Fire and with Arts and Entertainment and with the Community Impact Department. I want to thank all the staff for all their hard work and the great job tonight. Again, all of these reports and the information will be available on our website along with PowerPoints tomorrow. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Juergens. I'd ask for a motion so we could enter into executive session or remain in this room, so if there's a motion.
I'll move that we enter into executive session.
Second. Thank you. Seconded by Member Strazza. So at this point in time, Council is going to enter into executive session, excuse me, per the state statute requirement, and we'll hold that executive session here in this room. If members that are not entitled to be here would please exit.
And just to clarify, we're going into executive session for Section 2C2 of 5 ILCS 120 to discuss collective bargaining, and we are going to take roll. Councilmember Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Motney.
Yes.
Councilmember Strazza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hendricks.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Aye.
And Councilmember Scott.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes the meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
This vote record. Okay, we're back on then and if you repeat your motion for the record please, Member Strazza.
Yeah, motion to adjourn for the night.
Seconded by?
Second.
Member Hendricks, thank you very much. That concludes the meeting.
All in favor?
Aye. This vote record.